Bittersweet December 15th, 2021 Borough Council meeting. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Scott. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a presentation from Borough Council and the mayor. I am going to come down in front of the dais. I think as most of you know, Mr. Perone is retiring at the end of this month. So we have a joint citation from both Borough Council and the mayor. I don't know that I've ever seen this happen before. We're just making it up as we go along. So I'd like to read this. Citation of recognition, 36 years of public service. Michael Allen Perone, CBO, Borough Manager, for dedication and commitment to Westchester Borough. Whereas the mayor of the Borough of Westchester, Pennsylvania, and the members of Borough Council of Westchester, Pennsylvania, would like to express our appreciation for your 36 years of dedicated service to the Borough of Westchester, including as Director of Building Housing and Codes Enforcement, Fire Marshal, and Borough Manager. And whereas we thank you for your unwavering commitment to the Borough of Westchester, for your hard work and diligence in all of your roles, and for your dedication to the citizens of the Borough of Westchester. And whereas you have worked diligently in your time as Borough Manager to manage the budget, reduce expenses, protect taxpayer funds and assets, and complete projects on time, including the total renovation of Borough Hall, which was completed under budget. And whereas you have been an instrument of innovation and progress as Borough Manager, including hiring the borough's first Sustainability Director, working to establish the Pension Board, and overseeing smart and sustainable development in the Borough of Westchester. And whereas you have been an impeccable representative of the Borough of Westchester with your involvement with the building officials and code administrators international, including as President, and the International Code Council, including as Chairman of the Board and Instructor. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor of Westchester Borough Council and all the citizens of Westchester do hereby express our heartfelt thanks to Michael Perone for his many years of service to this community and his many good works, and do extend our warmest wishes for his continued health and happiness in the next phase of his life.
And of course, if anyone's deserved it, you certainly have after 36 years. I have seen you eyeing up that key. So we're gonna also present a key to the city to Mr. Mike Perone. Enjoy Hawaii, enjoy retirement in the Borough and the citizens of Westchester. Truly, truly appreciate all your service. So thank you. Mine?
No.
There's a story behind this pin, too. I created a pin years ago with Boca. We used to pass pins around. That's where they first started. Flags would replace the symbol with the flag, so.
This is our show. Don't give Mike the mic. Wait, wait, I'm not done. We have a couple other things that we'd like to present you with, Mike. The first is this lovely clock that says, presented to Michael A. Perone, December 15th, 2021, in appreciation for your dedicated service and leadership to the Borough of Westchester and its residents for the last 36 years.
Thank you.
And a couple more things. I'm gonna set this down for a second. Old map, old guy. So we'd also like to give you this. Can't think of someone more fitting to own a zoning map from the Borough of Westchester. Mr. Perone. And last but not least, we'd also like to give you a gift card.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for all of your service, Mike. Certainly been a mentor to me in my time on council, and I suspect that's true of many other people in this room and on the dais. You've been here a long time. I was five when you started here. And I feel old, so, boy. We really wish you the best in retirement. Enjoy Hawaii, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Not so fast. We have State Senator Carolyn Comida. Please.
Thank you, Mayor Norley. Good evening, Mr. President, Borough Council. So good to see everybody again. Wow, what great digs you have here. Well done, Michael, overseeing all the renovations that, you know, we all sat up here for about 20 years, planning and replanning and so on. So I have a citation for you from the State Senate with love. And all of your history and accolades and time here in the Borough is repeated here, but I'm going to add something. In this citation, it goes a little bit further back than your years in Westchester. Not that far back, but just so everyone has all of the facts. And the citation has all the whereas's, and I will read a couple of them in the details. Whereas the Senate of Pennsylvania is always pleased to recognize those individuals who, through their laudable tenure of service, contribute in a meaningful way toward the well-being of their communities in this Commonwealth. And whereas, Michael Allen Perone, I didn't know the Allen, is being honored upon his retirement from the Borough of Westchester, concluding a career spanning 41 years. And this whereas has all of the details, but I'm going to add some that were not there in the council's citation. A graduate of Ridley Senior High School and the Williamson School of Mechanical Trades. Mr. Perone began his career with Lower Marion Township in September 1980 as a codes enforcement officer. And then you joined the staff of Westchester Borough in April 1986, and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, but I thought that was really interesting to know your full career and that it spanned 41 years, which is a really, really long time to be serving and making communities better and better. Well, I was here with you for 12 of those years, and then you inspected some of my properties in the years before that. So we go back, we go back many, many years. But in conclusion, in this beautiful citation, it says, throughout his career, he has striven to adhere to the highest standards of service and has rightly earned the respect and admiration of his many friends and colleagues. Now therefore, the Senate of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania recognizes Michael Allen Perone for his years of loyalty and service. Proudly notes that he has demonstrated extraordinary commitment to the Borough of Westchester, the great Borough of Westchester. Offers best wishes for continued success in the years to come. And on behalf of the Senate, I am delighted to present this certificate to you. Thank you, Michael. It's been a pleasure to work with you. Thank you so much. Speech.
Yeah, I don't need a microphone. Thank you all.
Last, but certainly not least, we have Mr. Bill Scott. Mr. Scott. Pleasure. For your long, long service and dedication to Westchester and distinguished career as a public service servant, I'd like to present you with a key to the city of Westchester. May I? And the following is a citation for recognition for Bill Scott for his dedication and commitment to Westchester Borough. Whereas Bill Scott has represented Ward One on Borough Council for two separate eight-year terms and served as president and vice president. He has been the longest-serving member of council since 1974. And whereas Bill was instrumental in the founding of Barclay Park and an advocate for the maintenance and improvement of all Borough parks, especially his beloved Marshall Square Park. And whereas Bill fought the establishment of a Chester County center on the first block. And whereas Bill led the formation of the Business Improvement District and held a board position at the bid for 15 years. He was instrumental in the Westchester Library renovation and active in establishing the Uptown Entertainment Center. And whereas during his time on council, Bill supported the renovations of the municipal building and led the effort to construct the Borough parking garages alleviating parking issues for those visiting Westchester. And whereas the Human Relations Ordinance originated by Bill Scott created the Human Relations Commission, which promotes an environment of inclusion and protection for all residents of Westchester. And whereas Bill continues to be an advocate of the Westchester Railroad Restoration, was a sponsor of the Student Home Ordinance and was the Chair of the Comprehensive Plan Task Force during his time on council. And whereas Bill originated the Market Gay Street Corridor Improvement Plan. And whereas being an advocate for the historic preservation of Westchester, Bill effectively opposed excessive building heights, kickstarted the Market Street Rehab Project and preserved the use of clay bricks on all of its sidewalks. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the citizens of the Borough of Westchester do hereby express their heartfelt thanks to William Scott for his dedication to the community and your commitment. People like Bill make our community great, and we extend our warmest wishes for future health and happiness. Thank you, Bill. Mr. Bill Scott.
Yes, we want to go home, so I'll be brief. And very involved in politics. So what's common and are also involved in politics will realize that you have to acknowledge the... I'm just going to acknowledge everybody. So we'll start in the back, just raise your hand, say your name and address. That's, that would be two. Let me just pick and choose here. So that was a nice citation. I was asked by our council president, there he is, to come up with some thoughts about what I had done over this 25-year period. Remember talking about 97, I was running till today in the whole bunch of stuff like the Barclay Grounds and the Barclay Park. So it's about 25 years. And so I looked at the list that I had created and then the very nice citation that Teresa Edie put together. I thought, I should have been paid for all of this. I put a lot of work in, what the heck's going on here? But anyway, it was very meaningful and I'd always be happy to do it for Westchester. Now, but I just must, well, Reverend clergy, distinguished guests, Senator, fourth estate, everybody. And Perone, you've done a good job. I saw those pictures there, I thought, geez, this must be a funeral, you know, where they put the old... And his cremains are here someplace. But anyway, Perone's been here a long time and I was glad to see your family name. I think we were all surprised that you had such a good-looking family. No, I've known Mike for a long time and I've always cherished every moment. It's such a long time, but before he had this Robert De Niro look, it was great. It's gone, I mean, that's, that shows you how long, how long he's been here. And no, you did a good job. The thing that was the hay knuckle of your achievements that was brought to our attention was that he's just not a Boca Code guy or a member of the state organization or the national organization, all of which he was, to some extent is. But he was an international fellow of the Boca people. I don't know what they called them then, but you all get my idea. And somebody came and gave him an award here and we were all impressed and clapping and so forth. I don't know if the guy came from Europe, I think he was the Vice President of Italy or something like that. But it was very impressive, anyway, Mr. Perone. So thank you for your service, you did a good job. I can't talk about everybody on council or anything. I sit on one side is the Vice President of Council, Don Brayslin, and I'm really in sync with Don. By that I mean, we adjust our hearing aids when we come to the meeting so we can interact with everybody a lot better. So thank you, Don, for your years of service, friendship and support. On the other side is Bernie. I think if you watch closely, you'll know I'm in sync with him because he's always shown me where we are on the agenda. As if I didn't know. He's showing me his screen and thank you for all your help in that regard, Father Flynn. I acknowledge you. But anyway, it's all good, all been meaningful. I'd like to thank especially my photographer right here. She was the one who was in charge of getting me to these on time. And it wasn't her fault that it didn't, that it didn't work. So anyway, it's been a meaningful time. Oh, I forgot to acknowledge Dee, did you? She came here and she's have the COVID because she's got the symptoms. She's had a Kleenex to her nose there and sure, her eyes were getting all red and she was tearful. Maybe it's because you've been together with De Niro for so long and you're... Anyway, goodbye, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Final round of applause for all of our retiring council members and Borough Manager. Thank you very much.
And just so everyone knows, we'll be back here on January 4th and we'll take some time at that point to honor our outgoing mayor. But I wanted to make it clear that we have not forgotten about Jordan. The third, don't show up on the 4th, come on the 3rd. I need to update my calendar. I think Dana's tears were tears of joy. The next item on our agenda is the Mayor's Report for 2021.
Thank you very much. Historically, there hasn't been a Mayor's Report. I thought it would be a good tradition, potentially, depending on the next mayor, to start. Just as an overall recap of the year, some things that we've worked on. Now, all of these items we've worked on together. This has been a collaboration with Westchester Police Department, other partners in the community and everyone on council. So I will start there on page number three. Actually, I'll roll right into it on page number four. Starting with Railroad Restoration, the State of Good Repair Project for Westchester Middletown. I promise I'll keep this to 10 minutes or less. We put in for the RACE Grant. Unfortunately, we didn't receive the RACE Grant. But Grant 101 is you never receive a grant the first time you ask for it. And instead, you wait for the PENDOT, in this case, the U.S. Department of Transportation debrief on how we can make our grant better for next year. There's the State of Good Repair Project would put the 7.2 miles of active track initially to FRA Class Two. And then the 2.2 miles of currently impassable track from Glen Mills to Middletown restored to FRA Class Two. And then after that, the full 9.4 miles of track will be upgraded to a condition consistent with FRA Class Three, which means trains can go up to 60 miles per hour. And there will also be ADA improvements. And the demonstration from Westchester, including four stations along the way, is from Westchester to Middletown as a train shuttle in 12 minutes. Potentially get to Suburban Street Station in 64 minutes. That includes the turnaround time. We also had a recommendation from U.S. Senator Bob Casey for appropriations of $2.4 million to help with the State of Good Repair Project. That recommendation further highlights the growing public and legislative support to the highest level of government for the endeavors of expanding rail transit to the Borough of Westchester. While Casey's initial recommendation to the Appropriation Committee did not get funded, we're eager to continue the path forward to hopefully be awarded appropriations to help in the future, future years get funded. We also established semi-annual meetings. Myself and a group of rail professional, rail committee, as well as Sean Metrick, went down to SEPTA headquarters and met with Leslie Richard, the CEO of SEPTA, along with Bob Lund and Joe Connolly. And we have established semi-annual meetings between the Borough of Westchester and leadership at SEPTA per Leslie Richard's recommendation. We also were able to order, and it's almost done, the Economic and Equity Study by ESI and the draft for that, which will conclude, which will conclude the economic impact as well as how this could help disadvantaged communities. And we're looking forward to that report, the initial next month and the final probably February, March should be interesting. There's also an online petition that received hundreds of signatures. And we have, you know, written support from PA Rep. Diane Heron, Carolyn Cometa, Congresswoman Chrissy Houlihan, and working with President Fiorentino, we have that as well as, along with Delaware County Planning Commission, which is very important to have Delaware County involved. Moving on, quality of life and health. Operation Quiet Downtown. Chief and I, who's here, thank you, Chief, work together closely in establishing, combating the noise issues from loud motorists throughout the borough. Operation Quiet Downtown focuses on pulling over and ticketing motorists who are disrespectful and detract from the health and quality of life of Borough residents, neighbors and business patrons. Moving forward, we're looking at implementing, hopefully, depending on what the DA comes back with, decibel cameras, which will further prevent and reduce the nuisance. Having these sorts of decibel cameras, noise decibel cameras, has been successful in other countries. Many cities are now looking at it in the U.S., Australia, UK, Singapore, Taiwan. Many, many other countries have successfully implemented decibel cameras. And that will change the culture, the show-off culture of how loud my vehicle is and be revenue positive for the borough. So looking forward to continuing to see how that progresses. The next, the open-air marketplace and the pedestrian mall. You know, we've had a lot of success. We've knocked on a lot of doors, we've heard from our residents, we've heard from our businesses, people like it. And while the next couple of years, you know, we're going to have to continue a Band-Aid approach, as it were, like we did in 2020 and 2021, you know, we're looking forward to seeing whether we have some ways to put together permanent infrastructure. I'm saying permanent infrastructure, but removable ballards as outlined in the chief's memo to me dated October 13th. Vaccination, we've come a long way as a community on vaccinations. It's been tough, but as of December 9th, over 77% of citizens in Chester County have been vaccinated with at least one dose. So that's something our community can be proud of. All of council and I supported the vaccine mandate for all Westchester employees. Homecoming and Homecoming 2021 really was outstanding. We thought we were going to have like two classes because one class missed their homecoming. So two classes at the same time. And thanks for the planning and execution from Westchester Police Department. We were able to enact all necessary measures to keep our residents and university students safe. And this effort this past year serves as an exemplary year of public safety and quality of life and will be looked at as an example going forward. Thank you, Chief. Zero tolerance policies, particularly in the university area neighborhoods. You know, working with Westchester Police Chief, you know, further expanded zero tolerance policies for enforcing our quality of life laws. You know, it's extremely important, particularly in the beginning of university semesters, to set the tone with these sorts of zero tolerance policies. Camera infrastructure, camera infrastructure, each camera is a massive force multiplier. And we were able to put some new cameras with license plate reader technology in and around town, which will certainly, certainly help in clearing criminal offenses. And, you know, my message to Borough Council is we must continue to invest in camera infrastructure consistent with the Westchester Police Department camera plan. We have a plan of where everything goes. So please, please, please continue to invest. Next up, University Borough Relations. Proud of the Community Campus Committee that was officially formed via resolution and adopted by all of council. So thank you very much for that. The Community Campus Committee is to ensure sustainability of community campus programs, the structure and leadership with collaborative programs between Westchester University, Westchester Borough and other stakeholders. The CCC was inspired initially by the Community Campus Coalition. However, it showed its weakness when it was no longer, no longer met in a couple of years before 2021. So having a permanent place where these issues and collaboration can be addressed will be beneficial to Westchester and the community going forward. Community/university partnerships are extremely important. You know, as exemplified by my relationship with Chris Fiorentino. There is a proposed student housing project with approximately 400 new beds in West Goshen Township. And if that went forward, that area would have been heavily impacted as a transit corridor, heavily affecting Borough residents. And after several conversations, President Fiorentino, to his credit, without using poker chip, to his credit, on his own, he went and he withdrew support for the Westchester, West Goshen Township Student Housing and asked that West Goshen remove student home as a zoning use in the area south of East Rosedale and east of South Matlack Street. You know, establishing this partnership with the university is a necessary piece of bettering our community as a whole. For strong Borough and university relations only serve the better both communities. Next, Westchester Police Department advancements. You know, we went through the Westchester Police Department Strategic Plan that is on the consent agenda tonight. We talked about that license the last night, so I won't get too much into that. But really appreciate the collaboration and will be provide guiding principles going forward to the, to the Police Department and help through 2024. Westchester Police Department accreditation, you know, we're almost there, we're almost there, Chief. We have the accreditation, final run-through from the Pennsylvania Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission set in January, January 20th? January 20th. So that's been a long, long time coming, which included the infrastructure changes in this building that were necessary to even think about it. So very, very happy that that's moving forward. The Westchester Police Department Diversity Task Force. You know, we've been talking as Borough Council and other mayors about increasing diversity in the Police Department for years, years and years. And it's not a problem or a unique thought. It's a problem across the country. So we did establish the Diversity Task Force, have been working closely with various members. I want to thank them for their service. And, you know, this is going to be an ongoing effort and we have made significant progress. But this is something we can't let our eyes off of. We need to stay focused on it and we need to keep incrementally moving forward and we will affect change. We will affect the applicant pool to hopefully further diversify Westchester Borough in line with the community that it represents. Westchester Police Department staffing, proud to say we're at 43 officers. Our full contingent is 44 officers. Financial ad hoc committee went through that, said we were right-sized at 44. So that was good. We're 43 officers and we have successfully budgeted for the 44th officer in 2022. So proud to be leaving the Westchester Police Department close to the full contingent. So we also have been exploring as a Police Department, you know, the potential of a social worker unit, tracking a program out of Lancaster City. We're not sure where that's going to end up, but, you know, implore the new mayor and Police Department to continue to look at that. It's really to be determined whether staffing internally or utilizing existing county resources would be the most beneficial for our community, but there are our needs. Talk further about that, bend my ear and I'll go on forever. Number five, environmental initiatives. As a community, the community passed the Community Bill of Rights on a route to establish Westchester Borough's independence from less progressive state actions on sustainability and preemption. Chief among these initiatives was a ban on plastic straws and ordinary-use plastic bags. The Westchester Borough Council voted in 2019 to ban the above-mentioned plastics, but the initiative was delayed because of COVID. And now, hopefully, with the changes voted on tonight, that will actually come into force January 1st. Westchester Green Team has continued advancing the goals of sustainability and environmental advocacy, Westchester Borough. From the office of the mayor, we've worked really to provide a platform for the organization and highlight multiple causes. For example, the sustainable storefront businesses, all of them received citations of recognition. And we need to continue that work and we need to continue to award the behavior that we want to see in this community. And the environmental issues are so ingrained in Westchester residents. Don't Spray Me needs to continue as the environmental organization that it is to help mitigate the mosquito populations and hopefully stop Chester County from using harmful larvaicide sprays. Last, the composting plans. We started that conversation about composting and that's really another piece that should be, efforts continue to moving forward. We got so close, thank you, Will Williams and the Sustainability Advisory Committee for going all the way down the path. We thought we had a deal set in stone there, but unfortunately, we need to, we need to get back to that. And it's hugely important that we have a viable and sustained solution that's implemented, not another trial, you know, program that goes, goes one year and then disappears. So I want to thank Borough Council, Borough Administration and Chief Teresa Edie, who's been fantastic throughout for your time, your attention, your patience with this long report. So thanks again.
Thank you, Jordan. This is a cool idea, it's like a State of the Union Borough. I feel like we should be standing and clapping and booing, saying it's appropriate. But definitely something I think would be cool to continue. The next item on the agenda is comments, suggestions, petitions by residents and attendants regarding items that are not on the agenda. And I know Ms. Lavold would like to speak. Welcome back, Diane.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. It's a pleasure to be here. I should note that I think five of you are council that appointed Mr. Perone, right? It's all your fault. And plus, I was also on the council at that time. So anyway, thank you all. I also want to point out that I believe many people don't know that Mr. Flynn and Mr. Perone played basketball, I think, on opposing teams, is that correct?
No, no, no. We were at Williamson's.
Oh, Williamson, okay.
Yeah, I'm much older than Mr. Perone.
Yeah, I'm much older than Mr. Perone.
And that was in the days when Mr. Perone had hair. He said hair out to here, as he says, and was known as Sky for his ability to jump or not. But I, if you don't mind, I'm going to be talking to Mike, so rather than to you guys. First, Mike, Mr. Don Perone. I wanted to thank you for your willingness to give up your job as Director of Building and Housing and Codes Enforcement, where you were well established and well known. And well known as the guy who was totally committed to making sure that every building in this town is safe and that all development meets all code requirements. But of course, as has been pointed out several times, you were much more than just the Borough Codes Enforcement Guy. You were President of BOKA. Had to look that up to find out what it stood for. I think it was noted in the citation, right? Building Officials and Code Administrators International, I believe, and also Chairman of the Board of the International Codes Council. If I remember correctly though, I think this wasn't mentioned, you were also one of about 50 people in the country who were qualified to teach classes related to international building and property maintenance codes. Is that correct? And, but you also have to remind me, what does the CBO after your name stand for? Obvious thing, right? You were this first certified building official? Really? And I have to say, in 1986, when you came here, you were, I mean, if, if someone that age were hired now, in my mind, I'd think of him as just a kid. Like what you were, we won't, we won't say how old you were, but you were just a kid. So, but, so you, but you gave up your job in building and housing and codes enforcement, where you were very well established, and gave up your international reputation as a codes expert and to take on the job of Borough Manager in the twilight of your career, I should say. But that now has you, has had you for the past four, four years or so, walking around with a target on your back essentially, right? So, and also as Mr. Galey pointed out, you took it just in the moment as we were moving Borough Government out of Borough Hall and into the Spelman Building. That was, I remember, I remember going over there and like measuring the rooms. I was, I was so crazy at the time. And you didn't, you didn't try to stop me from doing that, which was amazing. And of course, that was the project that you brought in on time and under budget, as has been pointed out. From a personal point of view though, I have to say that I had a lot of fun working with you for the three years that I was President of Council. We had a lot of really good discussions and I think we resolved a lot of things on those Wednesday mornings that we spent in your office. And I, believe it or not, I always looked forward to those meetings because I could always count on you to offer what I consider to be pretty measured opinions and as opposed to what my opinions were sometimes, and also on solid facts, which might have been different from what I was thinking. And I have to say, sometimes a humorous take on those occasional uncomfortable situations that we faced. The good thing about your retirement, I think, that is that you can golf as much as you want now, of course, and you can have, now finally have a lot of time to spend with your family, which everybody knows is so important to you. And of course, they were here tonight, which was great. You can finally make them the center of your life and leave the landlords and the developers and the trash pickup and the road repairs and the storm drains and the sewer plants and the park maintenance and the five or six evening meetings every month behind you. The not so good thing though, and I think I said this in another thing that I gave to you, but I wanted it on record, is that the Borough loses your vast experience, your wisdom, courage. I could give a lot, a lot, give a lot of examples of what I mean by your courage, but I think people in council know what I mean. Every decision you ever made was in the best interest of the Borough and we could always count on you for accurate information on who to turn to or where to look in the code or how to think about a complicated situation. And you know, I never saw you get flustered and that is the truth. I never saw you get flustered, even when you were suddenly faced with that big budget deficit that's sudden caused by the, by the pandemic. Fortunately, I wasn't on council then, so, so you guys had to deal with it. But I, I know I saw you a couple of times and, and you, in fact, you handled it just the way you handled everything when I was on council, which was you just figured out what needed to be done and you made it happen. I think everybody in this room is grateful for that. So Mike, I wish you all the happiness and health, by the way, that you so richly deserve as you head into your next phase. You know, I was thinking our paths probably won't have reason to cross again, once you're gone, because you live up there in the northern far reaches. But I, I do want you to know that what I learned from you in those three years that I worked with you, and also when I was on the Planning Commission, when you were still codes guy. So even though our paths may not have reason to cross again, but what I learned from you will always stick with me. So I thank you for that. And also I wish Mr. Metrick best of luck as he steps into your rather large basketball sneakers. Thank you. Thank you, Council. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Diane. That was beautiful. Any other comments, questions, suggestions? Daryl, this is a feel-good movie, uh, evening. You're not gonna, you're not gonna mess with that, are you? Let's hear it.
Daryl Cook, South Hornet Street. My thanks to Mr. Perone for his get it done attitude versus the legal process, which is slow and expensive. The example of the courthouse alley sinkhole fix. Thank you. How much better could the Borough be if all Borough residents, all Borough employees were residents? I think our crime rate could drop and our ordinance may be better screened. Thank you.
Thank you, Daryl. Any other comments from anyone else in attendance? All righty. The next item on the agenda are comments by Borough Council and the mayor, and I will start with Ms. Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Galey. I'll be short and sweet. An hour in, I really want to thank the staff and employees of the Borough for a great year. I've been on council now for 18 months and I've learned quite a bit and a lot of it is due to the folks that have helped me along the way. So I want to say thank you, wish everyone a happy holiday, Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Mr. Allen.
Thanks. Yeah, I wanted to congratulate Mike Perone, Don Bracelet, Mike Galey, Bill Scott and Jordan Norley. Enjoy the time away from this building. Really felt like the right, right choice last night around 10:00 PM. Seemed like you made a good call. So yeah, no, but seriously, enjoy the time that you get back and I hope you guys get to do some stuff that you've all been putting off or have been looking forward to do while you've been working here. And yeah, this marks halfway through the term, which is kind of crazy. So I wanted to thank everyone who's helped me through the first couple of years, because definitely joined at a really difficult time. So it, I really appreciate it. I've like definitely made some mistakes. I've made some votes that I would change, but I think it's all kind of come out in the wash in a good way. And I think, I really genuinely think we're really on the right path and I'm really excited about that. Let's see, I'm looking forward to continuing to serve the second half of my term, looking forward to getting to know our new council members, the new mayor, Borough Manager, as we continue down this path next year. But until then, enjoy the holiday and the new year. And I'm looking forward to getting a lot of rest until then. So thanks.
Thanks, Nick. Mr. Stefano.
Thank you. Good evening. There we go. It's a better. Congratulations to all the departing members of council and the mayor. It's been an honor serving with you all and I definitely have learned from, some people had a lot more experience than me when I came on and I, and I really appreciate that. I wish you both all the best of luck. I don't miss you. I want to say congratulations to Mr. Perone and I have like one little just funny, one of the first time I ever had an actual interaction, like in person with Mr. Perone was, I was sort of on the zoning hearing board and I got appointed, I met with him beforehand just to kind of, for him to give me a quick overview and he said, what do you do? I said, I'm a middle school music teacher. And he goes, oh, you're perfectly qualified for this. So, and yeah, he was right. So anyway, that was short-lived until I came on here. So I love that direct attitude though. Direct, concise is my favorite thing on earth. So thank you, Mr. Perone. Congrats on your retirement. And the last thing is just a little plug for myself. Next Tuesday, the 21st, at the Chester County History Center. Is that what it's called now? Did I say that right? I'll be playing a gig there. There's a holiday benefit. It's a charity gig, so I'm not making any money for the Westchester Food Cupboard. I don't know if it has another term other than that, but if you want to stop by, it's 6:00 to 9:00. I'll be playing on the house band and there'll be all kinds of fun jazz Christmas music. So if anyone wants to stop by and support a good cause for the, the food cupboard. And I'm looking forward to being the only mic up here. This is like, there's like a million mics in this room now, it's just me. Happy New Year and happy holidays, everybody. Thanks.
Thanks, Mike. Mr. Flynn.
Greetings from the sweetest ward in the Borough, sixth ward. Everyone was very nice to Mr. Perone tonight. I know Mike Perone, because we've been together since the early 70s and when he did look like Michael Jackson with his hair, it was amazing. But the best way I can explain Mr. Perone was if you, if you have a mind to flashback to Julius Irving. Mr. Perone had the Afro, all right? He had high tube socks, Daisy Duke shorts, right? And then, and then the, and then the Afro. That was the, that's what our uniform looked like back in the 70s. Still burned in my mind what he looked like. It was like, it was nightmares. But I think the greatest gift I ever got was that in our later years, I was able to reconnect with Mike, because you know, when you graduate from college and high school, everybody goes their different ways and it was fun to reconnect with him for, for his time here and I enjoyed it. The, the other thing is however you celebrate, you know, the Christmas holidays, please be safe and enjoy your family. It's, it's very important. On the way over here tonight, I'm hearing universities closing down again, people not allowed in houses, like Princeton and Cornell, you know, they're shutting down the universities again. And we didn't have a Christmas last year because of what we went through. So we're in a good place right now. Enjoy your family as much as you possibly can. Mike, I'm the only guy that's not going to miss you.
Thanks, Bernie. Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a second chance now, don't I? So here's the thing. I did not acknowledge former council president. I thought rid of her, but every time I opened the welcome page, Borough website, I see her big face talking at me. So she's, she's here forever to see you, Diane. I also didn't say anything to her. A good friend and a, I respect very much. So I had it in my mind to say, well, I'm going to miss Jordan Norley. Then I find out last night he's moving three doors away from me. So it'll be hard to miss him. I'll try. And Jordan, you did a good job. That report was great and well put and I hope everybody appreciates it as much as I do. And I want to say, looking forward, Sean, Sean's going to be good. You can see that already. He's got good folks backing him up. Or gets up there or barbly onto, says their piece. The people behind you. Good job. And Chief of Police, oh, I'm going to say this, Jordan, I think it's time for it to get out. We're going to have a cost problem with the police budget. Jordan, chief got together, put in an order for a fleet of drones, enough to have 10 drones circulating around each ward in the Borough. There's a cost involved, but it's, it's good forward thinking. So best of luck, everybody. Happy solstice, happy Christmas, happy new year. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Mr. Bracelet.
Hello. Couple things. I'm going to miss Mike. I thoroughly enjoyed working with him. Of course Dana. Mike's a straight shooter. He can tell you that your idea is nonsense with a smile and you thank him for doing so. Just, I really, really appreciated that. Plus, first in your office. Anyway. It's, it would be hard for me to expand on what Diane said about you. I was like, damn you, why didn't I think of that? But anyway. Bottom line, this, my last eight years has been extremely rewarding and I've thoroughly enjoyed being of some service to a community I've loved for 35 years. I have met so many people, it's, it's just kind of astounding. Local leaders, business leaders, developers, officials surrounding municipalities, and each one has their own little bit of knowledge that you can tap into. About the Borough here, and I'm saying this bottom of my heart, the people that work here are phenomenal. It's just amazing. Every, if I've ever needed something, everyone has been forthcoming, very gracious with their time. I've learned much more than I probably wanted to, but it was, it was just phenomenal. I just, I can't say enough good things. Matter of fact, I, there were times when I'd be driving by and I'd just stop in to say hello, because everyone was so nice. I made a number of friends and I hope those friendships last long after my term ends. I also learned about how government works, the mechanics and various processes you go through municipal finance, leasing, emergency services. I mean, you don't do that stuff outside of here and how important public works is. And despite being a small borough, I've always been astounded by all the, almost thousands of little things that have to happen every day to keep, to manage this place efficiently. I, in the fifth ward, not much ever happens. So that's a good thing. The most exciting thing we had happen was three, three years ago, a tree fell on a house, 1:00 in the morning. That was our excitement for the year. I especially enjoyed resolving resident issues and I'm grateful that I was in a position to help. It's much like what I experienced when I was healthcare. I've always been a very strong advocate for responsible development to move the Borough forward and it, you know, it's no longer 1890 and we cannot go back to those times. But with care, we can still maintain the historic aura of the town. I was a strong supporter of Chestnut Ease, by the way. And I was almost fanatical about the Plaza Plan, which is now 44 West. And I was like that from the first time I saw the, the architectural drawings. And right now I'm really looking forward to seeing the hotel up the street be built. And every time I run into Scott Zook and I said, I want, I said, I'll start. I run into Scott Zook and I said, I want, I said, I'll start. There were a few times an issue that I felt strongly about was voted down. And that's okay. That's the way the system works. But what was so great about that was in all the councils we were on, even if you disagreed, you could still walk out the door and be smiling and hi, how you doing? And I really liked that. It just wasn't, I don't think it was usually a personal thing. But that was good. I think we, most part, we got along. The, finally, the last eight years have just been a profound experience for me. And I'm gonna miss it greatly. I'm gonna miss all the wonderful people, as I mentioned earlier, that they helped me through the process. Because when you get on Borough Council, and this is the guy that got me on council, because he called me up one day and says, I think you should be on council. And I forget my exact quote in return, but I think it was, are you nuts? But took him a few phone calls and I relented. He's a lawyer. He laid lawyer on me. So that's why, that's why I'm here. And thank you. So anyway, I just need to thank everyone. And I mean everyone involved with the borough, even people with whom I had disagreements or they had disagreements with me, because I still learn something from it. And you've just given me a very precious gift that I will always treasure. Thank you again.
Stan, Mayor.
Thanks. Since I took up so much time there and the last agenda item, I'll keep this short and save most of my comments for the reorganization meeting. I just want to say thank you to the retiring Borough Council members. It's been a pleasure. Bill, we've served for a while together. And some people on here won't admit it, but they're gonna miss you. And it's always a pleasure. We've had some disagreements along the way, certainly. But, you know, I remind myself in those times that people are passionate about issues and they're passionate about it because they think that that's what's right. And I think as long as we come from that foundationally, then we can appreciate, agree to disagree respectfully. And it's done a lot for the borough over the years. So thank you for your service. Absolutely. And Mr. Gailey, my close friend, I mean, you're rocking it. And I mean, these meetings, they're tough sometimes. And you really help to keep it lighthearted, you know, cracking a smile. Like, Mr. Peron knows that, the importance. I mean, you can't take things too seriously. None of us will get out alive. So really appreciate bringing levity in situations that is challenging and your ability to distill issues down to their core and make them actionable in a very deliberate way, I think, has been a huge asset to the borough through these challenging years. So you certainly be missed. Absolutely. Besides that, Sean Metrick, you're gonna do a great job. It's, I mean, you've got a wonderful demeanor about you. Love your approach. You know, your planning, you're very deliberate. And I love that. You're gonna do an excellent job. You've been coached well by your twin, I'm talking about last night. And I'm sure Mike won't be too far away on the golf course to pick up the cell phone every once in a while, in case needed. So looking forward to seeing everything you do, Sean, for the borough. And Mr. Peron, thank you once again for everything that you've done. I think just listening to everybody up here and Mr. Bull and everyone else about the impacts that you've made and your uncanny ability to, you know, rock and roll and cut out the BS, as it were, and get to working for the citizens of Westchester in a very challenging organization, which you'll certainly be. So thank you very much. Teresa, she's not here. But Teresa Edie, Assistant, I mean, she's been fantastic. She's helped everywhere along the way. And she's supporting both the mayor's office as well as the Chief of Police as the confidential secretary and assistant. And she's, she's awesome. She's really stepped into the role, grown into the role. And Mrs. Lillian D. Baptiste back there will be in good hands going forward as the new mayor. And congratulations, Lillian. Looking forward to seeing what you do as the next Mayor of Westchester. With that, I'm personally looking forward to spending some more time with my kids. My six-year-old girl, Asha, and three-year-old boy, loves of my life. Really happy to not share a wall anymore come January with a sorority. That's been challenging. However, feel really fortunate to be able to move up to on Marshall Square Park and have my kids grow up. So my heart will always be in the southeast. I'll always go to battle for my southeast neighbors. But, and looking forward to spreading out a little bit more, a little more quiet enjoyment. So thanks again. And Chief, for the Police Department couldn't be in better hands. Chief Moorhead is everything an officer should be. He has, his career has been exemplary at every turn. Whenever he could go deeper in a particular area or specialize in this particular area, no matter what it is, he went full force ahead and excelled. He has the respect and command of the lieutenants and the rest of the officers. And is forward-thinking and very progressive in really challenging ways. Wonderful to have dialogue on our Monday, Monday meetings and talk about issues and talk about ways that we could address those. And boom, you were on it. You knew exactly what you're doing. You operationalized and brought resources in and solved problems. So thank you so much for life experience. And you're gonna continue to do great things for the Police Department. So thank you very much. And with that, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Holidays, Happy Hanukkah.
Thanks, Jordan. We've talked about Mike a lot today. And somehow, it still feels like not enough. And I think that's because it's probably pretty hard to distill 36 years into a few speeches. I'm sure he doesn't like all of this attention. Trying to be generous. Similar to Mr. Stefano, Mike was actually the first borough employee that I worked with when I was on planning commission. And I'm still around, so I'm not sure who that speaks more about, me or him. But I really enjoyed my time on planning commission, working with you there, on zoning hearing board. And to Diane's point, appreciated your willingness to step in when the borough needed you, to take on a role that is often thankless. Sorry, Sean. And you did a phenomenal job with that. And I suspect if we had a time machine and we could go back to 1986 and look at what this town looks like, and then fast forward to today, the praise and accolades would be even greater. Because, you know, I obviously wasn't here in 1986. But as I understand it, Westchester wasn't the shining example of a beautiful, vibrant town that it is today. I'm sure that's in large measure in part to your dedicated work, both in the Housing Department and as Borough Manager. So congratulations. Enjoy Hawaii. I have one more thing that I forgot to give you and Don and Bill, which is a borough flag. I'm gonna get myself on your golf course and I'm gonna be looking for the porch with the borough flag. So, so if I don't see it, I'm gonna go door to door until I find you. Thank you very much, Mike. I do sincerely appreciate all your hard work for this town. And Sean, good luck. I think you're gonna do great. We're all really happy that you're here and have all the confidence in the world that, you know, you're gonna be able to do your best to fill Mike's shoes. You know, similar to Bill convincing Don to join council initially, Jordan's the one who convinced me to join council when my predecessor moved out of town. I'm really glad he did that. I will say he very much oversold the amount of time you would spend on council. I was told it wasn't that much time and he was full of it. He knew he was full of it. I forgive him for that. But I really have appreciated and enjoyed working with you. I'm glad you got me involved in council. I've really enjoyed working with all my other council members. I gotta be honest, when I think about the mental power that's on this dais now and has been on the dais, you know, my entire time here, I would put it up against any other borough or township in this state. I mean, we just have some really brilliant people who volunteer their time to work in this borough. And I'm constantly impressed by all of you. And your dedication, your ideas, your hard work. You know, oftentimes it goes unheralded and really appreciated working with all of you. Obviously, you know, nothing happens in this town without Dana. So we really appreciate you keeping Mike on task the last several years and in the years and years before that as best you could. You know, we never blamed you when he wasn't. But certainly, you know, none of us would be able to get half of what we get done if you weren't behind the scenes doing it to help support us. So appreciate that. And everyone else in this room, I feel similarly. You know, we have a brilliant group of folks that work in this, that work in this town. You know, and rather than talk about myself, I want to talk a little bit about local government, specifically. Local government works. What we do here, what the staff does every day, it works. Of course, if you expect perfection from any person or any entity, you're gonna be disappointed. No one is perfect. No institution is perfect. But the reality is that at least at the local level, everyone sitting on this dais, everyone sitting out there, working for the borough is well-intentioned and highly efficient and highly effective. You know, it's very easy, I think, to focus on, you know, for instance, the one time your trash doesn't get picked up. Be mad about that. Without thinking about the hundreds of times that it has been. I actually calculated it. I've lived in the borough 627 weeks. And my trashers missed one time. And they picked it up within an hour of me calling them. That's a success rate that in any industry would be astounding. And I think it's important to remember, both all the citizens and everyone in this room, that when things aren't perfect, that's not because people aren't trying. And you should try and remember all of the years and times that it was before then. And the success in that anecdote is consistent with all the functions of this organization. And I think on some measure, local government works because we understand that we're all in this together with our neighbors. I think a reality that's often lost on the state or federal level. And, you know, sometimes even in this room. In fact, I think that's one of the biggest problems we face in society is forgetting that we're all in this together. You know, the struggles that people in Mercer'sburg face, the small town where I grew up in central PA, are not any different than those that people in Philly face or anywhere in between. You know, my time on council has solidified my belief that when good people get involved in government, good things can happen. And hope we all remember that we're in this together. Last but certainly not least, every night I come here is a night that my wife has to put our two children to bed and do all the various other things that it takes to take care of them. You know, so I'd be remiss if I didn't thank her. Forward to some free time and that to the discussion agenda. The, what I want to do actually is split this into two separate discussions. I want to talk about everything but the CCC first, because I think the CCC is worthy of our most discussion, it being new. I'm gonna make some recommendations and then throw it out for discussion to everyone else for the committee. So for railroad restoration, obviously, two spots, both Tommy and Jordan make sense. For the Recreation Commission, I think Michael Reese would be my choice. For the Library Board, Katie Von Schiak would be my suggestion. For the zoning hearing board, we actually can appoint Mr. Keenan as a full member and Mr. Von Schiak as a alternate member, which is what I suggest we do. For the Historic Commission, Miggy Mason, I think, makes sense. She's a neighbor of mine. She's a brilliant person. That would be a tremendous asset. We can put her on any of these boards. She'd be a tremendous asset. For Sustainability Advisory, again, we have two applicants, two positions. So Don and Megan make sense. So I guess with that, with those suggestions, does anyone have any thoughts contrary to that slate?
Mr. Gailey, Bernie Flynn, I concur with your selections.
Yeah, Bill, go ahead. The ones where we have to pick are Recreation Commission, Library Board. Technically, we have to pick zoning hearing board, although we can put both candidates on. One is an alternate. I think it makes sense to put the professional as the full member. And then the Historic Commission, like I said, we'll go to the CCC after that. Yes. And Sustainability. That's right above the CCC. I'm gonna tell him you said that. Yes. Anyone else have any thoughts on the suggestions?
The suggestion?
Yeah, let's do that. Let's get this done with and then go to CCC.
I make a motion, accept the suggestions for the snake.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Peron, second to last vote.
Pass.
Val.
Yes.
Mr. Stefano?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yeah.
Scott? Mr. Braceley? Mr. Gailey?
Yes, the slate is approved 7-0. So last, we have the Campus Community, I'm sorry, Community Campus Committee. Obviously, this is a new committee, so we're staffing it. And we have, you know, some very qualified candidates sitting up here and some qualified candidates from last night. You know, there's a sense that Jordan and Don are going on other committees and expand the number of participants. But I wanted to discuss this separately because at the same time, I also think you're not gonna find two better qualified candidates than Jordan and Don or something like that, given Don's past eight years on council and Jordan's council and mayoral service. So I figured we would add up for discussion and maybe give Jordan and Don the last chance to advocate.
Just to clarify, we can choose, we can choose.
We can choose one from Ward Four, one from Ward Two, and then two at-large.
Yeah.
Direct, okay.
However, there can be more than one from four, more than one from 2W. There just needs to be at least one.
Ah, there can be more.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good clarification. So we could do the two Ward Four people and the two 2W people. It's just one would be an at-large member and one would be specifically for those wards. Or we could do one from each ward and Don and Jordan. No, we haven't narrowed it down at all.
Not to complicate things further, but I think you gotta stagger terms as well.
Awesome. So what are the terms? We're gonna do a one and a two and a three? A one and a two? Yeah, yeah. But we want to do one person for one year, one person for two years, and two people for three?
So I'll let you know my thoughts. I'm not gonna live in the affected, the primarily affected areas anymore. End of January, February. That being said, there are two at-large positions. I have been mayor twice. I've been chair of the Community Campus Coalition. Public safety going back, you know, I chaired that in 2012. I have the relationships. I'll put this whole, whole thing together. So. I'm kind of torn. I'd love to allow residents living in that area to serve. At the same time, I'm not sure who's gonna fill that kind of institutional knowledge, leadership, relationship role with that current field.
So let me make a suggestion and see. Do you have a preference in a term if you?
I'm happy to do the one.
What if we did Jordan for one year, Don for the two-year term, and then Marty and Nicole for?
We'll say. I will say, and, you know, I, I know, I know Marty well. Moved into my home that I lived in from 1999, when we first moved here until a few years ago when my parents moved out. And, you know, I mean, he won the Westchester Preservation Award. He is as invested as it gets in this, in that, this particular area of the, of the neighborhood. He's also a very, very high-functioning, highly experienced individual who has a lot to offer. As well as I know Brian Travis very well, who's also heavily invested in the area. Both of them are in 2W. Brian, he's a Democratic committee person. He's a community organizer. He's a communicator. His spouse, actually, is a PhD in communications with Westchester University. Kind of get two birds with one stone with them, plus the university perspective. I know, like I said, I mean, those are the two that I really feel strongly should be on. The rest, not, not so much. I mean, Francis, I don't, I don't know her that well. I mean, she sounds great. Nicole, again, I don't know very well, but she sounds very qualified as well. I'm sure Don, of course, would do a good job.
Mr. Gally, as far as my position on it, I would defer to Mr. Stefano, Mr. Allen. They're in that area. They know their constituents a lot better than I would know their constituents. Mayor Norley gave a good plea for people there. I support what he has to say. Ultimately, Mr. Stefano lives in that, that area.
I love this. Let's deputize Mike and Nick for starting this up.
I'm in for this. I'll, I'll speak for the Ward Four. I really think Nicole would be best. I, Fran, Francis sounded great, but I don't know her at all. Nicole, I've had a chance to speak to, you know, several times over the years, and she's highly motivated. She's really willing to serve, and I know she's a very positive person seeking to just help out as best she can. I think she'll do a really great job to help out. So I think for, at least for fourth Ward representative, I really would, would push for Nicole.
Yeah, so. I've spoken once before about playing ping pong out front of my place across the street from Mr. Flynn's house. But as a former college student, you know, relatively recently, who I, I really appreciated a lot what Nicole had to say last night. Because I definitely agree that college students are definitely looking to have a good time, enjoy their, can enjoy their college years. But the vast, vast, vast majority, and this is definitely myself included, felt part of the community. And I was eager to do the right thing. I was eager to help the Borough. I've really proved my point by being here too. So I just really appreciate that attitude of understanding towards the students. I do sometimes worry that students are very easily villainized and like to avoid that on the commission or on the committee, excuse me, as much as possible. And I thought Marty had some similar sentiments as well that I really appreciate. So those are the two I was definitely looking really dig my heels in and support as we talk about this. Don?
With Nicole, my experience, I don't know her that well personally, but I've dealt with her a number of times. And my reaction to what Mike said is exactly the same. She's smart, motivated, has enthusiasm. She'd be a good choice.
Thanks. So how does everyone feel about my proposal?
Mr. Gally?
Yeah, Lisa?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend Mr. Braceland as an at-large for two-year term. Mr. Marty Nimmel to represent the second ward for a three-year. Jordan Norley for one year at large, and Nicole Shimoney for three.
Brilliant. Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thanks. Mr. Perone?
Yes.
Yes.
Stefano?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
No.
Mr. Scott? Mr. Braceland?
Yes.
Mr. Gally?
Yes, the motion passes six to one. Thank you all. I appreciate that. The next item is the discussion that we began last evening on the potential settlement agreement relative to the pharmaceutical companies and open. Have we, I know you said we ran this by the solicitor. I'm assuming you meant Buckley and not Dilworth?
Correct, Buckley, Kristen Camp, yeah.
Have we considered reaching out to Dilworth? This seems like this would be more consistent with type of work that they're currently helping with in the plastics litigation?
No, I haven't, no.
Maybe we're.
They are directly, they're directly involved in this one. I agree with you, but I've signing documents, getting in line.
You may be right, but I'd like, I'd want to talk to somebody with, that has, you know, class action experience in their firm. I suspect Dilworth does. I don't know what Kristen's office does. Or maybe she does. I just don't know. But it seems to me like if this were me, I guess somewhat it is. You know, I'd want to have somebody who had experience with this type of litigation. I mean, at the very least, it's worth a phone call. Jerry, see? I did get your email, Bill. It did die. But in fairness, I did not have a chance to read everything that Sean sent us. You know, Jordan said that we won't admit to missing you, and I gotta say, I am going to miss you, Bill. You know, last month, we were doing it wrong by being in executive session. This month, we're doing it wrong by not. And I'm not saying you're wrong. I'm just saying, God love you.
We don't have to do it.
Maybe. All right, well, let's do that. Everybody good with that? I don't disagree with you, Bill. In fact, I'll go one step further. I agree with you. No, I think you're right. I think if we're gonna discuss settling on joining a settlement lawsuit, we should probably do that. Executive session. So we'll table B. Last item on our agenda then becomes second to last item, the consent agenda.
Make a motion that we accept the consent agenda?
Perfect. Thank you. Second by Mr. Braceland. Mike, this is your last vote that you're gonna call. Should we do some pomp and circumstance? You wanna, should we all say aye?
Yes.
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 Aye. The motion passes seven zero. The last item on the agenda is other business. Other business? We're gonna go into executive session after this meeting to discuss litigation. I have not had the opportunity to use this my two years as council president. So with that, I am going to adjourn this meeting.